Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our last forum of the election season. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I'm Nancy Lockwood. Can everyone hear? I'm standing up tippy-toe here so that I can see my eye. I'm chair of the Legal Women Voters Voter Service Committee. And I'd also like to thank the Albany County Public Library for assisting hosting these forums. They provide the meeting space, obviously. They do all the setup for us. And I think they're involving our youth in that setup, which is a nice way to be inclusive. Especially, I want to thank Caitlin White, who works for the library. And she is primarily responsible for doing the coordination for the setup for the forums. And before we get started with all those questions that Ali's already busy soliciting from you, I would like to go over some general information about forum procedures. As a courtesy to everyone, a reminder to turn off cell phones, or turn them to silent, or vibrate. And also a reminder that video recording of any kind is not allowed. And our forums are being videotaped by the lead and the library, and are posted on the lead's website. And if you need that website, I can get it to you, or if you simply Google Wyoming Legal Women Voters, you'll get to it. And just for further information, because I've been getting questions from people, the public TV's debates that they had broadcast, I think it was a week ago, was it just last week? Are what?
I think there's more.
Yeah, there are some more going on. Those are also posted, not on our site, but on the Wyoming Public TV's website. So if you didn't get to be here in person, you can still have a chance to hear the information that was presented. At this year's general election, voters are also being asked to vote on four other issues in addition to voting for candidates. These include voting on retaining our 1 percent sales tax, or what's called the Fifth Sense Sales Tax, retaining our 4 percent lodging tax. You're also voting on a constitutional amendment regarding the residency of the UW Board of Trustees. And there are judicial retentions that are to be voted on. On the back table, there are brochures regarding the lead, including membership brochures. So if you're just really having a ball coming to all these forums and are interested in current issues and current events, we certainly invite you to become a member of the lead and you can join in all the fun, besides just being in the audience. In addition, there are copies of our Wyoming State Lead publication. Got there? A look at Wyoming government. These are free, so boy, don't miss out on them. And we don't want to have them around again for the next election season. There's also a handout regarding the pros and cons on the Fifth Sense Sales Tax. And did we get the flyer yet?
They're on the seats.
They're on the seats. Okay. And that's on the constitutional amendment. Candidates, if they've brought any campaign literature, that's out on the back table as well. And we also have the precinct map, so if you need to locate by where you live, what precinct you'll be voting in, you can take a look at the map. And there should be sample ballots as well. The Legal Women Voters and the Laramie Daily Louberang also are publishing our voter guide, and that will be put out this Sunday, October 26th. There are already some advanced copies that are posted. They're at the clerk's office, they're at the public library here, a few other places in town, and you can access it again from the lead's website. And at this time, I'd like to give opportunity for any other candidates that are here tonight to stand up briefly, introduce themselves.
I'm Dana Brewer. I'm the Republican candidate for County Assessor, Mr. [inaudible].
I'm Peggy Trent, running for Albany County Attorney.
Well, thank you. We'll begin tonight's forum with questions to the candidates. Your questions are to be written down and can be submitted at any time. Please indicate at the top of your question to which race your question is directed. There are pencils and pads of paper in the seats, and you can raise your hand when your question is ready, and someone will pick it up and bring it to our moderator. Questions should be directed towards all candidates in a particular race, not towards a particular candidate. And each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question. We do have a timekeeper who's sitting up front here, who will signal you by holding up a sign when you're approaching your time limit, when 60 seconds have passed, when there's 30 seconds remaining, and she will have a stop sign as well. Now, Ali asked me, he asked me why we had the commissioner candidates and the House candidates mixed together. And it was simply logistics, to be quite frank. We would have ended up with five forums instead of four, and we were running out of Thursday nights before the election to get them all in, and so we elected to combine this one here. The last 20 to 30 minutes of the forum will be given over for informal conversation with the audience members. And our moderator, who I will introduce here in just a moment, has the responsibility to ask those questions, and also has the authority to edit questions for clarity and appropriateness, and may ask further questions to help expand upon an issue. In addition, the moderator may also vary the allowed response time limit based on complexity of the question and overall time considerations. So I'd like to turn things over to Dr. Oliver Walter. Ali came to UW in the fall of 1970 after earning his PhD in Political Science from the University of Illinois. It's my family's alma mater. He has spent his entire career at UW, and he was department head of Political Science for eight years, and dean of arts and sciences for 24 years before retiring a year ago in 2013. So welcome, Ali.
Thank you. It's okay. I've got you. We're okay.
Okay. All right. Let's now have the candidates introduce themselves. Start down with Mr. Selmer.
Mike Selmer, Democratic candidate for House District. I'm Mike Selmer, the Democratic candidate. Take three. I'm Mike Selmer, the Democratic candidate for House District 46.
I'm Charles Pelkey. I'm the Democratic candidate for House District 45.
I'm CJ Young, and I'm the Republican candidate for House District 45.
Pat Gabriel, Democratic candidate for County Commissioner.
Heber Richardson, Republican candidate for County Commission.
I'm Jerry Kennedy. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm Tim Chestnut, Democratic candidate for County Commission also.
And I understand that Mr. Kennedy was not able to be here tonight.
Correct.
So you're going to play both roles?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, all we need back and forth, legislature and the commission, keep getting questions here. So, start with commission first, and we'll start with you, Mr. Chestnut. What is the primary issue in this race this year?
I don't know what really the primary issue is. I think it's just how to work with the county. One of the issues is probably getting the road, getting How Road mix-up taken care of, getting people access to their land, and letting people do what they want to do with their land there on How Road. It's a tough thing, because it's an expensive problem. It'll take at least $5 million to build that road up to where it needs to be, and that's probably the biggest issue, other than maybe the statute. So, thanks.
As far as the biggest issue, I would say that, in my opinion, it's kind of a tie between sound fiscal management and the How Road issue. I totally agree with that. And that's not an easy legal one to sort out. We'll see how that goes.
Now, that has to be the shortest answer that Heber has delivered in the forums that we've been at. Would you agree, Tim?
Yes, sir. Very good. Thanks.
I really feel that the fiscal issue here in Albany County is uppermost, because we're the poorest county per capita. I think we always have to look at trying to fund road and bridge issues, the sheriff's department vehicles, keeping our employees content here in Albany County. We have a lot of different agencies in Albany County that try to take away our employees once they get trained. For instance, the sheriff's department, I remember, Tim, that when we used to serve back in the 90s and early 2000s, we would get sheriff's deputies trained, and then the next agency, either a city, or another county, or the Highway Patrol would come away. Since they're already trained, they can come to work for them right away. And so that was really a situation that we tried to rectify, and I think we took pretty good care of when I was a commissioner back in the 90s and 2000s. But I really think that continuing on, that we need to keep the grant situation going as best we can, keep the 1 percent sales tax in place, and continue working through some of the issues that we really have here in Albany County concerning fiscal issues.
Okay. For legislative candidates, as you know, one of the issues in the last legislature was the question of whether the state should take on the Medicaid federal mandate or not. What is, start off for you, Mr. Young.
Yep. Well, I think that is a critical issue, is the Medicaid expansion. And I'm actually been learning a lot about the issue as the campaign has gone along. I've learned a lot about how it's affecting rural communities, how it's affecting rural doctors, how it's affecting rural hospitals. So I actually, at this point, am supporting the Medicaid expansion. However, I want to make sure that it's the right fit, and that we're covering everything that's important for Wyoming citizens. I think that a one-size-fits-all policy a lot of times has problems. I'll give you an example. My parents, they're under a, in Wyoming, an Obamacare-approved plan, which they purchased, and they're 63. They're not planning on having any more kids, yet they're still forced to pay for OB coverage. So I don't think, that's where you need some tailoring that goes on. So, in short, yes, I support it, but I want to make sure that it's actually going to do what's needed for our Wyoming citizens, and it's going to be tailored to fit what's right for our citizens.
I think Medicaid expansion is one of the reasons that I got into this race, and I was really pleased to see Governor Mead change his position on the question this year. Unfortunately, that was only after a year of the legislature and the governor opposing Medicaid expansion, and something that cost the state to the tune of $50 million. We are, we would like to see an expansion, and to address largely the large amount of uncompensated medical expenses that rural hospitals have to deal with at this point. You know, not only is it a problem of the uninsured, but it's also a problem to healthcare providers. And it saps the quality of care for the rest of us, increases costs for patients, and I think unfortunately, you know, we look back at the record, and the state rejected that largely to make a political point against the administration.
Not accepting Medicaid expansion was one of the worst decisions Wyoming's made in a long time. That's our federal tax money that we're paying to the federal government, and to refuse to let that money come back to the state, to help our state's economy, to help our state's poorer working families, I thought was unconscionable. We should accept full Medicaid expansion as soon as possible. Negotiate, the negotiations with the federal government are not negotiations to make things better for the working families that don't have the coverage now. They're negotiations to make things harder for those families to get that coverage. You know, so I will be working to get that coverage for our state as quickly as possible. Hospitals are at risk by not having Medicaid expansion. You know, healthcare providers are also suffering because we don't have the Medicaid expansion. And our economy, we want to improve the economy in Wyoming. One of the quickest things we can do is accept Medicaid expansion, and allow that money to flow into our economy. Thank you.
Okay. So let's start out with you. This person who wrote this question sees a problem in the fact that the council or the commission is too small, and therefore, if one of you are gone, you just can't conduct business. Is that a problem, and would you favor expansion?
It would have to go to the voters if the voters approve such a thing. Certainly, I know in the past that we've had some problems with attendance when you have one person gone, then you have the two commissioners taking charge of decisions at the county level. But I know there was a push a couple of years ago. They didn't get enough signatures to get that proposition on the ballot. And so, it would just be up to the voters to decide. If they wanted to go with five, would be fine with me. I think three. I did not miss a meeting in my 20 years as a county commissioner, and so it was never a problem with me for attending meetings.
Same question?
Yes, same question.
Well, the easy way to deal with that is to not miss your obligation, your responsibility that you signed up for. My cousin is a commissioner in Carbon County, and they have five there. And so I asked him that question, and he said Carbon County has a lot of little birds spread out across it. It's a big county, so he thought that it worked well there. But it is, it slows up the process some, and, you know, we have Laramie, Rock River, Woods Landing Centennial. I think that it's easy to, for everybody to be represented with three commissioners, and it's not such an encumbered process, as long as everybody shows up to do their job. And I intend to do that. So in general, I would say I don't support it. I guess it's not really up to me, it's up to the voters.
I think three works really well. I think, as I've been on the commission, working with two others, it just seems to work. It seems that the bigger the body you get, the more problems you have. You've got nine city council people, and it just seems to be broken when you get that many people. There's also two more mouths to feed. Albany County can't really afford two more commissioners, so I support three. I went to the county commissioner convention up in Landor about a month ago, talked with others that have the five, and most of them would rather have it be back to three. So I think it just works better with, in the commission with three. You can't conduct business with two. It rarely happens, maybe once or twice a year, that someone's not able to get there in Jerry because of bad roads, maybe because I've been sick, something happens. But it's, I think, three works very well.
So all three of you have the same position in this, am I correct?
Yep.
No. Okay. You're for five?
It's up to the voters. I mean, I have...
You're the candidates!
I can go either way.
Okay. All right.
I suppose ultimately, we only get one vote. Same as everybody else.
But you're the leaders, right? Okay. Let's start with Mr. Selmer. How do you feel about the state legislature attempting to influence the subject matter taught in the science classrooms?
Thirty Wyoming science teachers unanimously decided that these science standards were the best things for our students going into the 21st century, that they would help make our students competitive in the job market worldwide. For the, you know, for the legislature to decide to put its nose into the issue, I thought was a mistake. It's really the second reason I decided to run. And it's a mistake, not just because of what they did, but it's a mistake by how they did it. A footnote on a budget bill is done with a voice vote that's not recorded. We can't hold any of those legislators accountable for putting that footnote on, and as voters, we ought to be able to do that. And I, that's one of the things I want to address as a legislator. But the science standards are solid, they're based on science. You know, I have beliefs that I hold dear, but I don't put them into conflict with science. Let's leave science in the classroom, let's leave our beliefs in church. Thank you.
I would concur with Mr. Selmer. I was absolutely amazed that we had a footnote dictating how science educators were to approach certain subjects in this state. Those things are driven by ideology and politics, and I would hope that we can do better than that. We've got a, you know, our students have to be competitive in a national market. If Wyoming gets a reputation for deciding that we want to teach science standards that are driven by local ideology as opposed to fact, we're harming our own children. And frankly, I don't believe the legislature's qualified to make that decision, to dictate the direction science education should go in this state. I've got kids in school. Well, I have a son in college and a daughter in ninth grade, and I am pleased that they're getting a, that my son got a great education, and I expect the same for my daughter.
When it comes to the science standards, I think that it's important that we make sure that they fit our local needs. I think it's important to make sure that they still stay competitive. I think we can do both. I think the current standards we've had in Wyoming in the past, maybe they need updating, and I think that's something that experts in education help us with. But at the same time, I don't want to rush in any new standards at this point. Let's make sure they fit, let's make sure they work for us here in Wyoming. We've had a ton of students, I've had friends from, that graduated from Wyoming high schools, under old standards, that were successful in medical school. They've gone to be lawyers, they've gone on to be in a variety of careers, engineering. And I think if it's not broke, let's not rush to fix it. However, if there genuinely needs to be some adjustment, then let's work slowly and make that adjustment.
Here's a follow-up to all three of you. What is the role of the legislature, though, in setting those kinds of standards?
Go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think there are, you know, and this is something that I've struggled with and debated with myself. What is the role of the legislature when it comes to these kinds of science standards and education standards in general? And I think that we absolutely need to rely on education experts in these kinds of areas, and rely on their input. But ultimately, it's the legislature that we have elected to help lead us. It's the legislature we've elected to help drive our policy. And I think the legislature needs to remain receptive to the voice and the concerns of their constituents. And if the constituents are having concerns about education or science standards, that's something that I think the legislature at least needs to examine.
The legislature's a political body. We're dealing with an academic issue. The legislature doesn't have a role in determining what those standards are. We don't fit science standards to local needs. We fit science standards to realities and facts in science. I'm an attorney. I'm not going to make a decision regarding physics standards. We would be in big trouble if we did.
I agree that the legislature needs to have some oversight, and that oversight is choosing people to review and make judgments on a variety of issues. We chose, a committee was chosen to review those standards. It wasn't rushed. The next-generation science standards were very carefully formulated, and our consideration of them was not rushed. So the legislature really had no place overruling a unanimous decision by a qualified body that reviewed those standards. And my feeling is that that's the way the legislature should approach things, is letting the bodies they choose to make professional opinions, you know, abiding by those. Thank you.
Okay. Let's do the commission. Having lived in, well, this says How Road, I guess, the county for 20 years, I don't feel that, I'm not really sure what this one says, I'm sorry. Let's go to the next one. What is the difference between a city councillor, a city councillor and a county commissioner? And how do, since we have a dominant, Laramie is the dominant city, it makes up, what, 90% of the population? What is the relationship between the commission and the city council? How do you cooperate? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think the major difference is that we're both, we're both governing bodies, but the county commission, we rule over seven other elected officials. So you've got the county clerk, the treasurer, the sheriff, clerk of district court, the coroner. So we're deciding things for people who've been elected, and funding the offices that are elected by the people. Where the city, what they're doing, they have department heads, so they hire those people. And so it's, we're working with people, we have to balance where decisions are made by people who are elected officials, the city council people are ruling with people that are their employees. And as far as the city and the county, I think probably the biggest thing is working with Aqua for Protection Plan. And then, really, I think the thing that we struggle with is that donut area, that one-mile donut area around the city, where city council has power to dictate what happens to people that don't vote for them. So it's, we're working with the people in those areas to make sure that they feel represented by our decisions as a city, or as a county commission, and that the city council doesn't do things to them, put them hindering their property rights for people they can't vote for.
I heard a couple of questions in there, and I think one of them was kind of to describe the difference between the commission role and the, you know, the types of governments that the city council is and the county commission. And I would say that the county commission is citizen budgetary oversight. County commission is elected representatives to essentially divide up the tax money that's collected in Albany County and distribute it even to the city, and to the town of Rock River, and in addition, review the budgets and expenditures of the elected officials in county departments. And county commission is generally guided by state law. It's a pretty narrow box the county commission lives in, whereas the city is able to decide and drive a lot of policy inside the city. The county commission doesn't have that freedom in the county. That would be my description of the differences. So, because citizens elect the county officials, you know, we review their budgets and fund them, but we don't necessarily get to tell them what to do that gets done at the ballot box. I think you get a different type of redress with city council.
You know, counties are arms of the state, and so we're very limited in the power we have dictated by the state legislature. And as Tim and Heber's talked about, we oversee the budget of the seven county officials, and we dictate how much money each department is going to get. Now, we do have a lot of say in land use policy, planning, and zoning, since we have a commission that undertakes that, and then brings recommendations back to the county commissioners. And that's certainly a big responsibility that county commissioners have. But on other issues, and when you compare it to the city council, will the city council pass ordinances like they did with the no smoking ban? Well, the county does not have a no smoking ban, because the city dictates what they do in the city, but there's, since there's no smoking ban in the state of Wyoming, you can go out to the Calderman or whatever, and light up your cigar like I experienced one night out there. It was horrible. But anyway, that situation, we had no control over. And so I think the other two candidates expressed the situation between the two bodies very well. Somewhat limited, but we do have, I think, a big say in what Tim mentioned in the donut area. We need to work with the city council. We had pretty good, pretty good cooperation between the two bodies when I was on the commission, and that's what you need to do. We have to cooperate. We're all in this together, try to make things work the best we can.
Okay. Then here's a follow-up on that, too. I mean, you say the relationship between the commission and the council were pretty good when you were there. What about the last year? What about the cooperation between the two? Has it been optimum?
Well, I would have to defer to Tim, since I've been on the outside looking in and reading the newspaper, but I know that they've had some issues recently with the recreation plan that has come up. A lot of the county residents are upset about the situation with not being notified, and that particular issue, I know that's a big concern, private property rights, and trying to work with the rec plan on the outskirts of the city of Laramie, trying to rectify that. But I would defer to Tim on what kind of relationship the city and county has had here recently.
Did you, Heber?
All right. As a non-incumbent, my view is from kind of the outside looking in. I think that the place where the county and the city interface or work together is definitely in that one-mile zone. As a commissioner, I intend to ask for statutory clarification on, to draw a box, you know, what the city's purview is in that area. I think that sometimes, and what the county's is, because I sometimes think that that isn't, it's not clear. I mean, I know that easements for streets and utilities are necessary for the city to be able to... to be able to plan out in the county for, so that we don't look like Mexico City or Baghdad. You know, we want to look like a good American city as we grow. But I think that in some cases, the notion that the city can plan outside its boundaries gets used for other things. And it's important for the people in that area to have representation, appropriate representation and they aren't able to elect city officials that are, that are working in that area. So that's a key, that's a key role of the county commission and it has been sticky at times in the last year, to answer your question.
I think the city council and the county commissioners worked real well together. I think where I've seen the sticky things coming into the last year or so have been from city staff bringing forward things that maybe the city council doesn't agree with and it doesn't get to that point until, until the city council's dealing with it. I think the, this thing with the rec board, I don't think the city council is, was expecting that to happen and they, I don't think they wanted it to happen either. So it was a staff problem more than it was a council problem. As far as personalities between the city and the county, we've worked great together in the last year or so. We've had several work sessions together. The only thing, the only thing, it's not a problem between city council and county commission in general, but is the civic center board, what to do with that board, whether or not they can take out loans. There's just a difference of opinion, but we're working that out and going, kind of having a back and forth, but there's been no problem with the two bodies working together. So we work together very well.
Okay, great. All right, back to the legislature. Who did I start with first last time? You? Okay. Okay. As you know, the state of Wyoming has decided not to appeal the district court, the appellate court's ruling on gay marriage. What are your thoughts on that?
I was disappointed. I really wanted to see Wyoming as the equality state, accept equality willingly instead of being forced by the states, by the courts. And our job is not yet done. Businesses in Wyoming can still legally discriminate against people based on their sexual orientation and by their gender and identity. So as the, for us to fully earn and deserve that equality state moniker, we still have work to do. So yes, I definitely support the decision. I'm just disappointed we had to be forced into it.
I was, I was genuinely pleased, but not particularly surprised that Judge Scavdall ruled as he did. I was pleased that the state has finally decided to give up the fight against marriage equality. And I have to agree with Mike that we need, we still have a lot of work to do in this state. Employment discrimination based on sexual orientation is something that the legislature needs to take an active role in stopping. Kathy Conley has repeatedly introduced legislation to that. In fact, I certainly plan on working with her to hopefully get passage soon. And I'd like to see the issue put behind us. Once we've addressed those problems, the legislature should focus its efforts on running this state and leave people's private lives to the people who are leading those private lives.
Well, I support the process and the, how the court came to its determination. I think that that's good. I originally said from the beginning of the campaign, I thought ultimately, no matter what the legislator wanted to do, this was going to end up being a court decision. And in the end, I think that that's actually a good thing. I mean, the legislator, we're not constitutional scholars, we're not experts on this. You had experts on both sides of the issue, debated to a very intelligent judge and he reviewed all of the issues in the case and came to his decision. And I think that that is example and process of our courts doing good work and coming to a decision.
All right, back to the commission. Take this one? How does the land, how does the land use planning and zoning in Albany County compare to that in other communities around the state? What would you like to do to make it better?
I think in talking with other commissioners, I've been landers about a month ago, we, in the southeast part of the state have different, because we have comprehensive plans, we have zoning and a lot of the counties don't have zoning. So I think that's, I guess that would be the difference. I think, I'm sorry, what was the second part of the question?
How would you make it better?
I'm not sure how to make it better. I think we have a really good planner and a very good planning commission that are really giving us great advice and working within the comprehensive plan and not making the comprehensive plan is a mechanism to guide, but it's not an edict that what we have to follow. So I think with the planning commission we have in place right now giving us good advice and still letting us make decisions against the planning commission if we like to, I think it gives a good flexibility. And I think David Gurch and his staff are doing a great job letting us know what the issues are before they come up. And I, I think it's actually working very well.
My thoughts on the issue are that I think it's interesting that a good portion of the state doesn't have, have planning and zoning. And, you know, even though it's the wild, wild west out there, you don't generally see things that are too ridiculous. So fortunately, in this county, we have some. It does cost us some tax money. It's not terribly intrusive and I'd like to keep it that way. It's pretty sensible, pretty simple, pretty straightforward and we can probably keep doing that just the way we do it now.
The county commissioners appoint a five member planning and zoning commission. They go through the process of looking at all of the applications for development, be it residential or business. They initially will take all of the comments and a lot of times they will really revise some of the problems before they actually come before the commissioners. Because they vet out and really take the public comments and really try to work the best they can to resolve situations that come up during the public hearings. And in my experience, we always had very good planning and zoning commission members that would dedicate a lot of hours to hearing the public during different situations. And then once they come to the commission with a recommendation, then it's up to the commissioners. And they make the decision based on what the county planning and zoning commission is recommending, but it's still finally the county commissioners' decision to make. And I think it worked very well. We have a really good county planning office that takes in all of the applications, then planning and zoning, and then to the commissioners.
All right, let's do the legislature. This one will probably throw you off a bit. Why should not marriage equality extend to consenting adults who wish to enter polygamous marriages? Is there any real public interest in denying equal rights to people in plural marriages? That's yours.
That's mine. That's mine.
You've got to start.
I get to start. Okay, well, thank you. You know, I've given a lot of thought of that, that, you know, when the marriage equality issue came up, certainly that was one of the arguments against it. And frankly, I don't think that we have a role in telling people how to live their lives. Do we give a state sanction to a polygamous marriage? I'm not sure that that is something that the legislature should do, but, yeah. You're right. It did thrill me. But, you know, I mean, it seems a natural outgrowth, you know, when you have adults who decide who they want to be involved with for their lives, then maybe, maybe it's something we examine at some point in the future. So CJ, what do you think?
I also was not prepared for this question. You know, this is something that was when I was in law school and family law, this is something that we debated at length and a lot of arguments were brought up on both sides of the issue about, you know, especially for marriage equality, are we going to have polygamous marriage be included in that? And my, my initial instinct on that is no. Sorry. My initial, I thought you were laughing back there. My initial instinct is no. I think that there, you know, there, you can look at going back in our history, we have two people married. I don't think there's quite as much of strong tradition for polygamous marriages. There are certainly some groups where that was common, but I think you can make a strong argument of, you know, how does that affect things as far as taxes go? How does that affect things as far as lots of kids in the marriage or marriages? And I'm just going in circles on this one, so I'm going to pass it down to Mike.
Before Mike gets it, I just want to thank you ever asked that question.
In my, in my mind, polygamous marriages are a religious institution where a man has more than one wife. When I see women having more than one husband, then I'll consider the possibility of polygamous marriages.
Well, that's clever. Okay, now to something more mundane.
Brevity would have escaped me if you answered that to me.
Okay, Mr. Gabriel, what about the future of the civic center?
Well, I happen to be on the Laramie Plain Civic Center as chair for the last year, chair, and I've been on the commission for the last couple of years. We're a seven member board and we've been very successful since we've had really two outstanding directors. Alex Shea was a director for about a year and a half and now we have Melissa Daniele who took over his spot. And they really had a vision for the civic center. We've been able to get a number of grants to upgrade. We got a grant for a little over a million dollars from the business council to upgrade the windows. The inside of the Griffin Theater has been updated. We're trying to do a lot of volunteer activities over there with groups. We had the North Gym painted here recently by a campus group. A lot of good things happening there. We still have a long ways to go. We just had an electrical study done that we got a grant from the business council from. It was a $20,000 planning only grant to find out what the electrical needs were and we're about $900 to a million dollars in need of upgrading the electrical supply over at the civic center. So we have a lot of things to improve, but we're certainly on the right track.
I think the civic center is a really nice amenity that we have in our community and I like the way the board is set up that runs it and it's been pretty successful. I think we can, those of us who've been here a long time can remember when the civic center was, had a wrecking ball about two inches away from the side of it and it's kind of nice that it's not that way. It's good to see that Head Start is looking to be able to get out of there because it's not really the appropriate space for them. And it seems like the civic center board is able to fill and the director is able to fill that space, you know, with good tenants. It's a, it's a nice space. That's about what I have to say about it. As a commissioner, I, I wouldn't have any problems with ongoing support of the civic center. It's a, it's a nice facility and we should hang on to it and keep, keep making it go.
I think the future of the civic center is quite bright. There's a little bit of question about with the loan that the foundation came out with, how that gets spent and what the question is there. Tim Sullivan has actually asked the county attorney to ask the attorney general about an opinion about whether that, or a board like that to take out the loan as they have done. So that's a, that's a concern I have, but as far as the future of the civic center, I think it's fantastic. The things that are going on there are wonderful. I think Melissa's doing a great job. I think the board, the way it's working, I used to be liaison to that board. I think it's working much better than it did under the previous, not the previous director, but the one before that. I went to junior high there, so I have a love for the building and as a shameless shill, we've talked about, I have a comedy act tomorrow night over there during the Purlin's show, so show up, it's $10 a head, 15 at the door and all the profits go to, all the profits go to nonprofit organizations.
Shameless.
Shameless, that's what it is, shameless.
Okay. I think we're along for commercials. We're back to the legislature and Mr. Sullivan. Wyoming is a very energy friendly state. What are your opinions on the coal industry and the EPA's attempt to regulate the industry?
Well, Wyoming's energy sector is crucial to our economy. Any threats to it need to be, you know, examined carefully. But I also think we have a responsibility to look to the future of our children and grandchildren and not be resistant to changes that are good for them. And I think that if we continue to examine new technologies and work with the EPA instead of suing them, I think that we have the opportunity to continue to benefit from the coal industry as we work hard to transition towards, you know, renewable energies in the future. It's going to take a long time and we need to start the planning now. It's going to take 20 or 30 or 40 years to transition from fossil fuels to renewable energies. And I think we need to, you know, address the issue in that light.
You know, I find it interesting, the Wyoming coal industry is actually thriving because of regulation and alterations and regulations with 1992 Clean Air Act amendments that allowed midwestern coal or electricity producers to forego best available technology, scrubber technology in favor of an affluent standard. And that small change to regulation is what, what really gave this state's coal industry a boost. We have benefited from, from regulatory changes and we have also are now facing a challenge because EPA is taking steps to regulate carbon dioxide. And I think it's essential that we do address that problem and we look at alternatives. And coupled with looking for alternatives forms of energy, we need to look at alternatives for the state's economy. We are a single, you know, we, we're the biggest coal producer in the country and we, we depend a great deal on that revenue stream. We've got to look for alternatives though because coal will eventually be, be replaced and we need to look realistically at that future. 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, it's going to happen and I think people will look back and see what we did to prepare for that change.
Well, I think that coal is absolutely critical to Wyoming. It's critical to our state. It's critical to our economy and I think it's critical to the nation. If I'm elected, that's something I want to do is work and stand with the governor to oppose the EPA regulations. I do think we have a war on coal and I think it's going to damage the industry and it's going to damage things here in Wyoming. Coal is huge for the state. We have over $1 billion in revenue generated from coal industry in Wyoming. Coal goes to a lot of schools that are built. A lot of that money comes back to even here in Laramie and helping projects at the University of Wyoming. It filters through a lot of our funding streams. And under these new EPA regulations that are going to be set to kick in around 2016, we have 72 gigawatts of coal generated power is going to be stifled. And to put that into comparison for you, that's every home west of the Mississippi excluding Texas is going to, that's how much power we're losing. You could power all those homes on that, on that energy. And we're also losing three coal plants in Wyoming under the new regulations. So I think that's also damaging to our economy to lose those jobs. And I think UW is leading in a lot of clean coal technology with the School of Energy Resources. I think that's a huge positive. And I think that's something we need to continue to work on to make sure we do have clean coal and the, I think Wyoming is pushing the boundaries and, I'm sorry, University of Wyoming is pushing the boundaries and really helping lead in this sector.
Well, let's have a follow up on that one too. So all this relates back to global warming, whether we believe it is real, whether the state has any obligation in this regard to prevent global warming. I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, kind of echo what I just was talking about. I think that what we're doing at the School of Energy Resources is helping. I think that what we're doing is helping address issues with coal. And I think burning coal, especially if we burn it clean, is a positive for Wyoming and it's a positive for the nation. And I, my big point is I don't want to see the economy crippled. I don't want to see Wyoming's economy crippled over new regulations.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Yeah, what, this question relates, of course, to global warming.
Okay.
Whether it's real or not, and what is Wyoming's part in, if you believe it's real, limiting global warming.
You know, yeah, I'm often amazed that this is still a question of belief or not. I mean, there's, there's a consensus among climate scientists greater regarding human triggered global or climate change is greater than the percentage of people that responded or scientists that agreed that smoking caused cancer. I mean, at this point, I don't think it's a debate. What we need to do is start making adjustments to our economy, and, and I, I put some stock in, in clean coal technology, I put some stock in efforts to, to limit carbon dioxide, but, you know, I was covering clean coal technology as a reporter 20 years ago, and boy, that had a lot of promise. I haven't seen a lot of that come up, but at some point, we're gonna have to address carbon dioxide levels, and if we, if we can do that through technology and the University of, it says start. Do you want me to start again? You know, if we can do that, that's great, but, you know, globally, we're gonna have to address the problem, and we are, this state is one of the biggest producers of, of coal in the world, and we're gonna suffer the consequences if we don't start preparing our economy for, for alternatives.
I'm one of those people that's skeptical by nature. When I see something on the internet, I don't accept it at face value, I always do a lot of research. And I've seen the arguments against global warming and, and spent numerous hours researching them and found them to be without basis. You know, the science behind global warming is, is not refutable by real science, and I think for us to continue to resist the idea that something has to be done to address man's contribution to global warming, I think it's important that we, we get past that, because it's, it's important that we get started on it. How it affects our economy in Wyoming is a very crucial issue, and I want to see it done in as gradual and economically friendly manner as possible. And I think that's, I think that's, we're able to do that if we work on cooperating rather than resisting the standards that are being asked of us.
Okay. All right, this is one that you can all give your opinions on. What can Albany County do to improve jobs and wages? According to the paper last week, Albany County isn't even close to state average wages. Everything's, everything keeps going up, but wages. So let me start.
I think we can support, like, Laramie Economic Development and getting some grants in here to get, help companies build the infrastructure that they need to get their projects done. I don't think as a commissioner that that is our role necessarily, is to do jobs, but to actually fund things that bring other jobs in here. I think we've got some good things going on with Pete Lee and Associates moving in north of town, and we've got some great businesses coming in. I think if, with City Council and County Commission, just making it easy, easy through planning and zoning to get people in here and make their, their transition from going from somewhere else coming here as easy as possible is what we can do as county commissioners.
That's kind of a rigged question, because we got 10,000 people here going to school, you know, so per capita, that changes the dynamic. Not everybody's out trying to make a living. I do think that we have kind of a dual economy here, which is interesting. There's people that make, what I would say, a primary wage, and then there's kind of a service sector that supports that. We don't have a lot of blue-collar jobs that pay real money, like oil and gas and coal pay real money, they just do, and we don't have that here. So I don't think we should try to look to solve our problems the same way it's solved other, other places in the state. What we do have is human capital, and that springs directly from the university, and I think that we've underutilized that for way too many years, decades. There's a little bit of tech boom percolating here, and I think that it's the role of the County Commission for the most part, and the city, to just stay out of the way. You know, as a businessman, I know that it never occurred to me to go talk to a government entity to try to figure out whether a place was a good place to locate, or I've never made a business decision based on what the government was doing, I made it based on what the market was doing.
Or people are doing, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so the point of it is, sometimes when you're in that seat, you can think that you need to do something, but mostly, maybe you don't need to do anything, you need to just get out of the way.
And to go along with that, we have a number of students that are bringing down that wage, average, entry-level jobs, working on campus. Then we have the professors and the support staff at the university, then we have the people at the Forest Service, we have governmental agencies like city and county, they're making fairly good wages. So that 24% below the state average is skewed quite a bit, as Heber said, with the population at the University of Wyoming, when you have a lot of those entry-level jobs that pay a little, maybe a little above the lower wage scale, and so that, you know, they, they struggle there, but they're, they're part-time students, and they're trying to make their way through college with that kind of salary. Tim mentioned that Pete Lee sponsored a grant for the Wyoming Business Council to get that organization in here to supplement what they were doing out north of town. Working with Laramie Chamber Business Alliance is, is a primary concern of myself as a county commissioner, working with that organization. The Cirrus Park is a, is a prime example of what is coming forth to really develop some good jobs there. And so I think, once again, if you look at the entire Albany County structure, you know, you have some low-paying jobs and some really good-paying jobs, and you have to continue to work with the Business Council to get some of those grants in here.
I think they give you a bummer.
Well, I'm gonna be echoing some of the previous comments that have been said, but I think, you know, part of the problem we do face, we're not an energy-rich county, and that's where a lot of the high-paying jobs are, are in energy-rich counties. So I think that's one of the first challenges that we face. However, I think several before me have said we are rich in human capital. We have a lot of great minds coming out of the university. I know as a recent graduate of the university, I feel passionate about trying to get a job and stay in the community, and I know fellow students that do as well. And so, any way we can diversify and add new jobs to this community that allow you, that are not just a service industry job, that allow you to stay in the community, be successful, raise a family here, I think are very important. And I think that, you know, from the legislative perspective, ways that I could help influence that are working with the Wyoming Business Council, making sure that we have funding options available to Albany County to spur business, spur new growth, also working as a community leader and advocate to, you know, help, help recruit business, and then talk to businesses and see what they need. So I think there's a variety of approaches we can take, and I think we need jobs for folks that are coming out of college, but we also need jobs for folks that grow up right here in Albany County, and if they never spend one day in college, they should have some great opportunities as well.
You know, it hearkens back a little bit to the previous question in that the state is, is largely dependent on revenue streams from minerals. The alternative is to, to work hard to diversify the state's economy, and there is no better community poised to, to lead innovation in technological areas. We've got the most educated workforce in the state, and, and I agree, our numbers are skewed downward because we have a large number of adults who are, who are attending school and not generating incomes, but the, Laramie provides an opportunity to, you know, to develop industry, and I think legislature can, can assist in that, particularly in ensuring that we have adequate infrastructure and adequate schools and an adequate environment in this community and around the state to attract high-tech businesses.
I've been knocking doors for six months, and I've talked to some of the people that are bringing down that, that average income. You know, a man who had three jobs to support two kids and paid rent on a trailer and got laid off from one job and was trying to figure out how to, to find a third job. So I don't accept that it's, it's a matter of the students at the university bringing our incomes down. We need to work a lot harder to bring quality jobs to White, to Albany County that are outside of the university, and the technology efforts we've made are good, but so far, they haven't yielded much in the way of income, increased income, or increased employment. You know, we need to redouble those efforts, but we also need to work at, at attracting other businesses, you know, light manufacturing and other industries. We could really use a USDA meat processor in Wyoming, and I think Albany County would be a good place for it, benefit our ranchers. There's a lot of other ideas that are out there, and we need to just work a little harder, because it's not just the students. There's a lot of people suffering in Albany County.
Okay, again, this is a question all of you can approach, it's maybe quite as high a level as jobs, but, so we'll start with you, Mr. Sullivan. Since ARC shut down its recycling, glass recycling program in Laramie, Laramie has been without any means to recycle glass. Do you think glass should be recycled, and what would you do to fix this?
Couldn't have set up the questions better myself. One of the things I didn't get to mention, because I didn't have time in the last second, last question, one of the jobs, one of the cottage industries that I think would be of great benefit to Albany County is a use for recycled glass. There are a lot of countries, a lot of cities around the world that aren't gathering up all that glass and shipping it hundreds of miles to, to, to big plants. There, there are cottage industries available, and I, I think we need to work harder to explore that option. I definitely think we need to recycle the glass. We don't want to be putting it into our landfill. One of the issues that really bothers me, though, is with our new landfill, the recycling fees and the trash fees are identical. If we don't want people just throwing everything together and dumping it in our dump, you know, we need to make sure that it's economically practical to separate recyclables and take it to the dump. We can't have the same, you know, we can't pay $9 for a city, for someone in the city to drop their garbage off and then have that same person have to pay $9 for recycling. They're gonna say, well, why should I bother? I think that should be addressed.
Mr. Pelican?
Yeah, I was disappointed when the ARC glass recycling program ended, and I agree with Mike, I mean, there are some, some opportunities there. We have, that glass is a resource, and right now, we're throwing it away and we're not doing anything with it. And I think that, that we should work at both the local level and at the state level to encourage that sort of recycling. My sister-in-law is one of the executive directors of the, the German program, the Green Dot, and they, there are a lot of innovative ideas that Germany is using to recycle materials, and we, we can learn a lot from other states, other countries, and, and tap into resources that we're throwing in the dump.
Well, I, I support recycling, recycle in my home, and I think this is something that I agree with Mike on. I think if we could get some kind of, espers some kind of a private industry to come into Albany County that can do something with the glass resources we have, I think that's a win-win for everybody. We're taking care of the glass, it's not going into the landfill, and we're creating new jobs, which is something I'm always about, and I think that that's, I, I would definitely be open to looking at ways we could do that.
Once ARC Industries stopped their recycling program, there was an organization on campus, I think it was called the Conservation Corps, something of that, I think that was something like that. And then they would come out at Walmart and recycle every couple of weeks and take the recycling, I believe, to Colorado. And so now they have not continued that for some, I'm not sure, unknown reason, but as a county commissioner, I think we should work with the city and supplement and start another program similar to that. I think we can take that recycling to Colorado. My brother lives in Colorado when he comes up. I just save my glass, he takes it back down. It doesn't come up that often, so my neighbor next door and I sometimes have to combine, and we, we have quite a barrel of glass when he comes up. So that's what we do here on a personal basis, but I think that the city and county could work together to find an organization that would be willing to do that. I think it's very important that we continue recycling, because everybody got used to doing it over the past number of years until ARC decided that they couldn't afford to do it any longer, but I, I think there's a viable organization out there that would be interested in doing it.
I think that recycling is good. I don't really think it's the role of government to be in that. When, when the ARC was running a recycling program, it was expensive enough that it was hurting their other programs, and there's a commodity price out there that, that's the reality check on glass. Glass isn't a pollutant. It's unfortunate if somebody doesn't come in here and use what's in this community, but if somebody can find the cottage idea to do it, that's a good thing. I don't think that it's my role as a county commissioner to try to make that happen. It's, the economics of it are pretty daunting, and I don't think that's a really great use of taxpayer money. It would be really cool if somebody could find somebody, find some way to make art that's, that's expensive and sell it, you know, or something, but I, I know that I've seen where companies make asphalt with glass, you know, there's, there's uses for glass. I think the issue Albany County has is that we don't produce enough, and, and if you're a green type, I don't know what the carbon footprint is to haul glass all over the country, because it's a low-grade, you know, commodity, but, you know, you gotta think about these things generally, the finances of it are directly in relation to the value of the commodity, and so, you know, if somebody can find a higher use for it than it has now, it'll be more valuable and it could probably fly.
Yeah, I was working at the ARC just before they, they had this, this problem, and it's just a bad thing. One peripheral problem about employment is there's a lot of those art kids that aren't working anymore, they're just sitting at home watching TV, so if you know of anyone that needs some low-level help, get these people employed in the community. I think as far as recycling, that power plant there on the university property was built to burn our garbage, and something happened with City Council in the meantime, and they made, they changed it and made it a whole fire. I think we need to look into going back on that and making that something that burns our city, our garbage. I can't believe we're even thinking about building a landfill, and we have a German on the City Council. Germany is making money by people sending garbage to them, and again, they're recycling it and making energy out of it. It's, it's just a dumb thing that we are thinking back in 18th century thoughts on a 21st century problem, so I think we need to think outside the box and get something in here. There's money to be made here, so.
Okay, County Commissioner again, and Mr. Gabriel, we just start. What do you see as the role of the county regulation in the protection of public resources like groundwater?
Yes, we worked with the city when I was on the commission to protect the aquifer. We also, in the specific purpose tax that was passed, set aside some money to look at the I-80 corridor coming down the interstate to protect that particular venue in case there was a semi-truck spill, and so that money was set aside to do that. We worked very well with the city to protect the aquifer. I think it's one of those things that nobody can argue about, and I was very pleased with the cooperation that we got through both bodies when I was on the commission.
What do you think of the county commission's role in regulating county resources such as groundwater?
Well, I think the county commission definitely has a role in that. Well, I think the county commission definitely has a role in that. It definitely has to be a measured role. It has to respect property rights, too. I guess water probably crosses property lines, so, you know, you gotta make sure you stay on top of that. I don't think it's a huge challenge in this county. The aquifer is a sensitive issue to people, but I think that it's mostly an emotional one, and when you look at the science of it, it's less threatened than we think, with the exception of the I-80 corridor. And I was somewhat disappointed that the county commission, that the county itself is still looking for a place to put a catch bond. I do think that that's where the primary threat to the aquifer is. And as a county commissioner, I would love to continue the effort to protect the aquifer by dealing with that issue with the help of the DOT.
Yeah, obviously, as said before, the aquifer is a big issue. I think as commissioners, our role is to use county money to protect that resource whatever way we can, and working with the city and not doing dumb things like, I'll say it flat out, the Kennedy Compromise, taking part of the aquifer protection zone and drawing lines where geologists have told us that they shouldn't be in that place, they should be in different places. So I think we need to follow the science. I think the I-80 corridor is probably the biggest problem, and just, we need to be more prepared. We're not prepared for the problems that could happen. We have thousands of trucks going across the state every day carrying hazardous waste, fuel, things like that. We need to be more prepared, working with, like you said, YDOT, and getting, being ahead of the game, not being reactive, being proactive and projecting.
Okay, here's one that'll wake you up again. What are your thoughts on the legalization of marijuana? The argument is that, oft-repeated, that it's legal, just as now prostitution is legal in Nevada. So what are your thoughts on that?
All right, well, on this issue, I currently do not support the legalization of marijuana in Wyoming. I think that just south of us here, we have perhaps one of the best studies we could have ever wanted or hoped for to look at this issue going on. Colorado did legalize recreational marijuana, so I think it's important to, you know, let's wait a few years. Let's see what actually happens long-term in Colorado before we pass something like this. And ultimately, I don't think we'll be able to pass a bill like this in Wyoming anytime soon. Maybe down the road, if you see a bunch of positive effects, maybe, you know, crime rates have gone down, folks in jail and prison have gone down, maybe it hasn't become a public health issue. If this has all worked out in the end in Colorado, then I think we can move back and begin to address this issue again.
You know, we generally pass laws to protect society from harms, and Colorado's, I think, a reasonably good example of how little harm marijuana presents to the state and community. On the other hand, the laws that are designed to protect us from the scourge of marijuana have a much greater negative impact. You know, if you're found with a pipe, with a bit of residue on it, you potentially face a year in the Albany County detention center, you face fines. If you have more than three ounces, you potentially face three to five years in the state penitentiary for a plan. I agree only on the, that it's unlikely that we would pass full Colorado-like legalization, but I certainly support full decriminalization, a civil penalty, moderate fines, and be done with it. Right now, a kid, nineteen-year-old kid who is caught with a pipe with a little bit of residue faces being saddled for the rest of his life with a drug conviction, they face loss of federal financial aid. You can derail a young person's life for a single mistake like that, and like I said, I think the current law is doing far more harm than the harm they're trying to protect society from. So I support decriminalization, and ultimately, I prefer to see a Colorado-like legalization.
Both of my parents died from smoking-related illnesses, so I don't favor bringing another smoking product into the marketplace, you know, by making marijuana legal. I do support decriminalization. I agree that the laws generally do more harm, and they are extremely expensive to our state and our nation. And I'd like to see marijuana decriminalized. But I do support medical marijuana. I think if there's a doctor who prescribes it for medical reasons, and I've talked to people who use and need it for certain conditions, and under those circumstances, I think it's, I think it's important. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, let's start with you again. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, my stance on this is pretty well documented after my Senate run. Prohibition has never worked on any product. And so the fact that marijuana smoking is happening in this town right now and all over the world, and it's not, I mean, it's, we need to legalize it and tax it and make it safer. All it does, all prohibition does is make criminals and make cartels coming up from Mexico, cutting off people's heads, things like that. We can, we can tax it, make it safer, and obviously, the medical marijuana is a big thing, too. It's ridiculous that we think that we can stop things like prostitution and smoking marijuana from happening. They're happening, and we need to look at it and deal with the problems that it is happening. We've created, Eisenhower talked about the military industrial complex, what we've created is the prison industrial complex. We've put more of our people in prison every year. We have three million people in prison, a lot of them in there for nonviolent marijuana crimes. We can save so much money, decriminalizing, getting these people out of prison, and not making it just affect the rest of their lives for getting busted for a joint.
Yeah, this might not surprise you, but I'm not a big weed guy. I don't want my surgeon smoking weed. I don't want my, you know, airline pilot smoking weed. I kinda like being safe. That said, I do know somebody that was on chemotherapy, and they had five or eight drugs to deal with the chemotherapy, and they gave them all up for marijuana, and all of a sudden, the nausea was gone, the guy had an appetite, he was dying of cancer. It was a great thing. There is a place, I don't think that it should be a felony if you possess marijuana, you know. I don't want to pay for three hots and a cot for a guy who's, you know, smoking weed, but I definitely don't want it legal.
Certainly favor decriminalization. As Charles mentioned, we've seen so many lives ruined by it, by just a very small amount. Certainly in favor of medical marijuana. I think it's very important. You see stories all over the country about how some individuals are moving their families to Colorado because of the situation with medical marijuana, and it's just a lot easier when it's available in that venue, and so I'll just leave it there.
Okay, let's do legislature.
Thanks for letting us answer.
Raising the minimum wage would put many, more money in the pockets of workers. Do you support raising the minimum wage? Mr. Young.
All right, well, first thing, I always support folks making more money. I think anytime you can make more money, anytime you can increase your income, you're gonna better your life, you're gonna take that money, you're gonna spend it, it's gonna grow our economy, and I think that's a positive. However, I'm not convinced that just doing a large raise of the minimum wage necessarily doesn't do that. I think it has to keep up in small increments with the cost of living increase. However, I also think that anytime you take the flexibility away from businesses on what they can pay folks, that's gonna hurt the economy in general. When you, I'll give you an example. My parents have worked various, owned various small businesses in Rollins when I was growing up, and they would hire folks starting at minimum wage. Very quickly, if those folks were doing a good job, had a good work ethic, showed up on time, they would bump them up well beyond minimum wage. And if they were there a while, they were making a heck of a lot more than minimum wage. And I think that that freedom is important for businesses. And if you have a higher base minimum wage, I think that that is gonna mean less employees that are hired in certain businesses. And the businesses, if you increase that minimum wage, they're gonna make it up somewhere else, whether they pass it on to the consumer, whether they reduce benefits, whether they cut hours of everyone working. There are, there's no free lunch. It's gonna come from somewhere.
At minimum, I support raising the minimum wage to be equal to the buying power that the minimum wage was back in 1968, 1970, when it actually had some meaning. Right now, we've, federal government is not moved on, Congress has avoided dealing with minimum wage, so it slowly gets eaten away by inflation. And at this point, it's essentially meaningless. The state has the option of increasing its minimum wage, just as other states and communities around the country have. I think that we need to support a living wage. At some point, people who are working for a minimum wage, I mean, at this point, we're talking fourteen thousand dollars for a family for, you can't do that. You can't survive on that. So what you do is you turn to state programs and state resources. So the rest of us end up supplementing those meager wages. I think at minimum, we need to have a realistic minimum wage. I think, I've done the calculation before, it's at least ten dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. That's not a lot of money to take an hour of somebody's work and time. And it's far more realistic to support a family or even an individual and to stop a run on state resources that we have to do to supplement those low wages.
As a small businessman, I understand the concerns that the business community has about a blanket raise to the minimum wage. But I also think that there are solutions besides that. I would like to see a little bit more careful examination of the issue and perhaps have a starting and training wage, a minimum wage and a living wage, all pegged to certain amounts of time, served on the job. There's a lot of room for further examination of this issue, and I don't think it should be yes, minimum wage or no, minimum wage. I think we need to address the fact that there's a lot of people in this community that can't survive on what they're being paid, even though they're working forty hours a week. And that's not what America is about. We're supposed to be able to, a person should be able to support their family if they're working full-time, and that's not happening now. And I think we can address this issue in a way that's business-friendly, but still is compassionate to the people that are working to survive.
Okay, now this is gonna be the last question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Gabriel, we'll go this way, and then back to Mr. Selmer. We've all been very nice to one another. This is a chance not to be. Why are you the best person? Why do you think you're better than your opponents in this race?
Well, I would never say I'm better than my opponents. I'm just throwing myself out to the electorate and presenting that I've got some experience in this job. I get along with a lot of people. In the twenty years I was on the county commission, I didn't make any enemies. I was able to work with the city council, the public. If we had a disagreement, we were able to disagree but not be disagreeable. And I think that's an asset that I bring, but I certainly wouldn't say that I'm the best candidate. There's other people just as well-qualified as I am. And so it's up to the electorate on November 4th to make their decision, and let the best candidate win.
Wow.
I'm not gonna say that I think that I'm the best candidate in a politician sort of way. I do bring some unique experience. I'm involved in a lot of different things in the community, and I grew up here and I know this community well. I'm kinda wonky, and I've paid attention to the politics. And I'm prepared to wade into the foray and get after it. I am an opinionated person, but I am also not a nasty person. I'm a pleasant person, and I appreciate people even that I don't agree with. So I don't think it'll be a hard thing to get along with me. And I think that the people in Albany County will enjoy having me for their commissioner for a time. And I'll be happy to get out of the way and let somebody else do it when the time comes, too.
Well, I'm actually gonna have to answer your question. I think, you have to think outside the box and think on your feet to answer these questions when you're, these things. But I am the best candidate because I do a good job, people like me, I'm a calming force on when people are in contentious areas. I'm funny. I think my sense of humor brings a lot to the county commission and my role, especially with working with city and county. And so, yeah, I think the reason is because I am the best candidate.
Okay, let's go, help Young and then Selmer.
I'm the tallest candidate. You know, my background is kinda weird. I'm an attorney, but I've only been an attorney for five years. Martha remembers when I was a janitor cleaning operating rooms at Iverson Memorial Hospital, now thirty years ago. I've worked a full spectrum of jobs, from operating room janitor. I win worst job competitions, by the way, whenever that comes up. You know, I've been a newspaper reporter, I've been a radio reporter. I covered the state legislature for years as a reporter for the Casper Star Tribune. I've been a US Senate Press Secretary. I, my jobs and experience have run the full gamut, you know, from minimum wage to, a lot more than minimum wage. I've been a part of this community on and off since 1976, and I have a real passion for Laramie, and I love Wyoming, and I think I will, I will do a fine job. And so, yeah, I think I'm the best candidate. I'm a little older, twice this guy's age. Tell him you're younger and more energetic.
Well, I am the energetic candidate, so. Oh, you know, overall, I think we've had a great cordial, issue-based race. I appreciated that as we've gone along. I think it's been a good race. I feel that I bring a lot of experience with me. I might be young, but I do bring a lot of experience with me to this race, and if I'm elected, I'll take with me to Cheyenne. You know, my dad helped, he was a county commissioner, he helped, my whole family really taught the value of public service, the value of being involved in your community. And those are things that were instilled in me from when I was young and something that I wanna carry forth in my life and with my family. You know, I had the opportunity, some of the experiences I'll bring with me are, I had the opportunity to work for two fantastic leaders. I worked for Senator Mike Enzie, I worked for State Auditor Rita Meyer, two fantastic individuals. I had the opportunity to travel the state with them and see a lot of different areas of the state of Wyoming, the different issues that different communities face, and hearing those concerns, then learn from Senator Enzie and State Auditor Meyer how we can actually address those concerns, fix things, and make it better. Also, my parents were involved in small business. I worked for those businesses. My first job was actually McDonald's, so I know what it's like to start at minimum wage and start in a business like that. So I bring a lot of experience with me, both in the private sector and having worked both at state and local and federal government levels.
I felt like I could do a better job of representing the district when I began my campaign in May. In the last, for the last six months, I've been knocking doors almost every night. I've had more than three hundred and fifty hours of conversations with people all around the county. And I feel very confident now that I can better represent our district than the current representative who's, you know, I need to pull my punches some because he's not here tonight. But I, there's numerous things that I see the legislature doing that indicates to me a lack of common sense. From the Senate File 104, where someone should have recognized it was unconstitutional to do what they were doing, you know, from the vacation theft bill, the next-generation science standard footnote, all of these show a lack of common sense and a All of these show a, a lack of common sense and a lack of a wide variety of experiences in the legislature. I think the, the more variety a legislate, legislature has in the type of people that are represented there, the better the outcome that they will, will, will produce. And therefore, I, I very much believe that I am the best candidate for the forty-sixth district.
I want to thank the candidates. You know, I retired, teach a class of American government, you have state law, everybody has to take American government, the University of Wyoming. And most of my class made up of students from Saudi Arabia and Kuwait. We try to talk about what is democracy about? This is what democracy's about. You know, we've got people willing to put themselves on the line and go out there and lead and reflect our wishes and I think they'd all deserve a great hand. Thank you all again and the candidates are up here for you to discuss whatever you make with them. Thank you for coming.